Good afternoon, everybody. It is May ninth, twenty twenty-two at six P M., and I'll call to order the Free Town Board Selectment Meeting. I think first, we're gonna jump actually over to Personnel Board, to Agenda Item ten. This is to the appointment of twelve persons in the list below to Library slash Senior Center Building Subcommittee, which they, uh, which area they will represent, so I'm gonna kick over, um, to Carlos, to, to this.
Good evening, everybody. Alright, Personnel Board, May ninth, twenty twenty-two. Discussion post-actual following topics. Number nine, approve the following appointments. A, um, I'm just gonna read both of them, we can discuss afterwards, what are? So, A is Jacob Morelli, as Labor for the Highway Department, effective five sixteen, twenty twenty-two through six thirty, twenty twenty-two. And of course, B, Linda Fournier, to Open Space Recreation Advisory Committee, effective five ten, twenty twenty-two through six thirty, twenty twenty-two. After reviewing both these, I don't see any issue to move forward. I make the motion to approve these.
I'll make, I'll make a motion.
I'll make, I'll second it.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number ten, alright. Approve the appointment of twelve persons from the list below to the Library Senior Center Subcommittee, in which area they will represent, effective five nine, twenty twenty-two through six thirty, twenty twenty-two.
So, yeah, I have just question on this one, so, or a statement, I guess. There's some uncertainty in how this, if this project's even, like, how it's gonna move forward and what form? And I don't know if it's necessary right now for us to make those appointments. But I'm okay with doing it, I just think it might not work out that way, depending on, you know, some, how things work out in the future.
Right. So, a- as you know, especially folks here, last Thursday, we discussed Pignis two today, so we can, you know, look into getting more information regarding this topic. You know, one of the things that we quickly discovered is, yes, we could, Subcommittee made it so that we can go ahead and make another Subcommittee for the COA in the library. One of the things that haven't really been discussed in looking into it, there's no funding for it, right? This, uh, not the building, but as far as the Subcommittee itself, how to proceed forward. So those are the things we've been discovering as we dial, you know, look into this more and more. So we could do multiple things today. One, we could go ahead and appoint twelve people, or less, I'm not sure if we need all twelve, but we can appoint twelve and pare it down later if needed. Two, we can postpone it until we have more discussions on it as far as how we move forward. And it's open for discussion, a- as, as we know, as folks know, we don't talk to each other. So we do this live and debate live, so that, for the purpose of the town. So, you know, it's not easy to make decisions when you're, you can't really talk to each other. So, those are the things we gotta rethink about as far as how to move forward, um, with the Subcommittee. Do we just go with the yes today, or do we move it to another date? I, I just.
I was, I'd say we move it to another day until we have a better idea of what we're actually gonna do going forward.
That's the problem, too. So if we create another gentleman over there that spoke the other day and said, you know, we, we did a Subcommittee, and then it was all kind of, we wasted our time for nothing, was his point. And, uh, I, I don't want to say, okay, that's great, let's make the Subcommittee, we have all these people join the Subcommittee, and they meet, and then the plans change, and then we're right back to square one. It's not fair that we have people willing to volunteer their time, but that's, that's my personal opinion.
Right, because there are things that, kind of, not unknowns, but you really gotta think about, right? So, there was a, well, two of our articles from past years, right, totally about one point one million. So, question is, what happens to that money? That, does that continue on to the Subcommittee, or does that stay with, just with the COA? If we move forward, it's just the COA, nothing to do with the Subcommittee? Those are the things we really have to tackle, and really get an answer to before we say, alright, Subcommittee, A, B, C, move forward, because we have, don't have the design yet, we don't even know where it's gonna be built yet, the scope of it, right? So there's a lot of unknowns, right? And like, like I said always, may not like what I say or what I do, but at least you'll be able to understand it, and I can talk to it, just like everybody else. And right now, I just don't have a clear answer as far as what the right answer is. Yes, the seniors deserve and need Senior Center, I don't think anybody's gonna disagree with that. I don't, I don't think anyone will disagree with you with that. Does the library need something? Yes. But moving forward, what's the, you know, what's the best answer?
Well, the other day I spoke and said that I don't wanna piecemeal things, right? And that's something, we don't wanna Band-Aid it, we don't wanna piecemeal it. So, you know, we have something going forward that we're trying to figure out all this, how we best utilize the land that we have here, and what we do with it. I like the idea of getting that answer first, and then making our decisions based off of that.
Yeah, I mean, we have a warrant article that, you know, I'll jump ahead, but we'll fund a study for this area to see what kind of buildings we could have in this area. And then I personally think that, you know, once we have the understanding of what our needs are, what we can do with this area, then we put it to the, to the townspeople to vote on where, you know, what we should do, what should our next move be? So that's something down the road, I just, back just to, just the specific, um, agenda item, I just don't know if it makes sense for us to do that today, when there's just a lot of uncertainty right now.
It is the question before it comes up, we're not trying to kick it down the road, right? Because we do have in a warrant article that we've discussed today, right after this, that does bring it up, to get the answers we need. You know, if, you know, for instance, just the other day, we received a petition that's been passed around town regarding, some of the citizens regarding the COA, that they want just to keep that money with the COA, okay? But then there's also, there's also a Subcommittee that was created, COA Library, that said, hey, we're gonna move forward with a joint multi-use building to better serve multiple people and, and multiple, um, groups in the community. So, we really have to figure out what that really means. Is, is it one person speaking for everybody, or is that the whole group saying, this is how we wanna proceed? We don't wanna step in, of course, we don't wanna step anybody's toes, we serve you. Same time, we also serve nine thousand two hundred fifty other people as well, right? So what's the best decision for everybody involved, and not just? And I wanna say select few, because that's not, that's not what the case is, but we wanna make sure we get it right, alright? Like, I'll use this exhibit, this building as like an example, it's built for tomorrow, right? There's a whole second floor that's untouched, if they ever need to grow, task force needs to come in, we can update it, and it's already here in place. Is, is that something that meets all your needs tomorrow, in the future? And I know from last, last week, maybe you said, some of you may not be here for the, when the building does kick off. We're not trying to stop it from happening. But, you know, we do have to think about what's happening, not just here in town, but here in mass, and also in the United States, you know? Look at the economy. Again, not, no excuses, it's just the facts, right? Is, what we have in place right now, meeting the goals and the needs for everyone involved? Can you honestly answer yes right now, right? I know I can, uh, and I won't speak for my, my Selectmen and anybody else in town. We, I, information is power, and these articles gives us that information. Gives us a study, it'll tell us how big, how much, and where to place it. That makes sense, doesn't it? And that's just next month, that's a quick meeting, next month, not quick, we know how those go. It's a meeting next month that gives us the answers we need to make sure that we're giving back to the town a one hundred percent. And that, that might not be the answer you wanted, but at least I can argue that fact. That's, that's the, that's the truth, so please, hopefully that, it's reciprocal. It's like, we're not here trying to fluff it anyway, but we're also here to make sure we get the right answers for everybody involved. Does that make sense?
Yep, so, so I guess we're gonna hold on this and not vote on today, does that make sense? Alright, good, thanks, Carlos. So, I'll start over, start now the, uh, with Agenda Item one, which is approved minutes from four twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. So I'll entertain a motion to approve these minutes.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so now, um, I'll entertain a motion to open the annual and special town meeting warrants.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now, I think the way, best way to do this, is we'll start off with the annual. I don't think it, you know, we're all familiar with what the articles are. I think it might make sense for us, I'll just, I'll read the title and the explanation of the article. And if we have, um, if there's anything we wanna talk about further, we'll, I'll, I'll mark that number down, we'll, we'll put on hold, and then we'll come back. And we're gonna have to vote on, you know, what, what we approving the articles that are not by petition, right? And then also, it's us, um, voting on what we recommend, what we don't recommend. So does that work for everybody?
Mm-hmm, yes.
It makes sense.
Okay, so, Town of Free Town Fiscal two thousand twenty-three, so Article one is the, um, is the operating budget. Self-explanatory, this article serves as introductory article for presenting the omnibus budget, okay? No holds. Next is salary and com- um, comp-
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm sorry, um, so, you should have all received an updated omnibus. Are you guys going to go through that and your recommendations?
So.
Or recommend it as a whole?
I was gonna recommend it as a whole, I was gonna go back to that. I, I, maybe we can do that right now, actually makes sense, but my, my plan was to have everyone review it, I, I, I took a look at it. Um, and you did a very good job with the comments, that makes everything so much easier. So, I guess, maybe it'll take two minutes right now, and everyone look, look through this, if there's any questions on it, we can talk about it. If not, we'll, uh, approve it as a whole, or, you know, so. I mean, we also sat through all these, the meetings already, so.
Understood.
Nothing jumping out for any, any big differences from by committee?
Yep.
Well, this is the only question you have, is if it's time to ask the question.
Sure.
So, one of this over the weekend after we discussed it regarding the town clerk part-time, where would that person sit?
She won, she has told me before that they would actually, they're trying to redo her office in order to be able to have three people sitting in there, so. I don't, I don't recall. Did she add that to her?
She has, um, she put in a capital request for, like, all new office furniture. That, um, capital request, she has rescinded, probably come back in October and ask for it again. It's about seven thousand dollars for her office furniture. So.
It's always tough to meet, yeah.
And that is one of the problems, right, with the town hall, we're tight on space.
Right.
I mean, I, because of all the stuff we argued with, you know?
Yeah, so, and now, once again, I'm just gonna, I won't, we won't vote on that right now, but I think it's a good opportunity before we look at a lot of other stuff, to look at the budgets, since it is very important. Is there anything that you would like to bring up?
Yeah.
Oh, no, no, I just, um, you know, ultimately need to fill in your recommendations for the town meeting, so. Makes my job easier, if it's all the same as department requests.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think there was a couple of things that we kinda hashed out during those previous meetings. So, yeah, alright, I'm good with that, any, any other questions? Okay, so that's Article one. Article two is the salary and compensation for elected officials, uh, for the Town of Free Town, straightforward. Couple of small increases, just for, uh, I guess, I'll read the explanation, elected officials are not covered under Article ten of the Personnel Classification and Compensation Plan under a union contract. This is only, uh, the only avenue to adjust elected officials' salaries to keep pace with inflation, and contractual increases to other employees. I will note that Selectmen's, uh, stipend is not changing. Okay, so, Article three is operating budget of the, um, Water Sewer Enterprise Fund. So, this is the operating budget for the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund, presented in accordance with Master General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three F and a half. And so the total is one point two million dollars. Any questions?
No.
This is breakdown of the direct and indirect expenses. Article four is establish a vaccine revolving fund, we spoke about this at length. But the, the Board of Health, through the efforts of the public health nurse, receive an N P I number, along with Medicare billing privileges for the administration, um, of vaccines. The establishment of this result revolving fund would allow receipts for medical billing to be used to offset the cost of vaccines, medical supplies, and wages of medical personnel giving injections. Good? Uh, Article five, spending limits for assorted revolving funds. There are clearly listed out there what the spending limits are.
Can I make a comment?
Yep.
Um, so, under, uh, on the, the second page there, where it says Recreation Committee long on fourteen thousand. There was an, come on, do we have it?
Yep.
There was an amendment at the annual town meeting, um, last June, um, Article sixteen, that changed the, um, the control of that particular revolving fund to the Board of Selectmen. So it should say Board of Selectmen, not Recreation Committee. Article number is that? So Article five, the part that goes on the second page, it's the Board of Selectmen, that's currently the authorization quality for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, good catch. Okay, Article six is other post-employment benefits study. So, um, this is to see if the town will transfer seventy-two hundred dollars from available funds. Um, who, I think, this is a, there's a misprint here, says from available funds, from available funds. To update, um, two-year actual O P E D study, so this is a study to, I guess, maybe, Teddy wanna explain this one better than I can?
It's just a study to, you know, the O P E D is the unfunded retirement benefits, where we're trying to get, uh, funded. Um, and it's just to look at how much we are going to need, to see what we're on track to do, um, with the funding that we're, we are currently doing, what we've done, um, to see what, you know, when we're gonna actually meet our goal of O P E D. And I don't know how many millions it is that we need to put aside.
But just so we have a better idea of where we stand.
Right.
And we've been tripping away at our unfunded liability, but.
Very slowly, yes, very slowly.
But this year. Yes, um, and it is required in order to have your, um, an unqualified opinion on your financial statements. So they do have to review the data every other year.
I just have to deal with actuaries all the time, yeah. I didn't understand anything they were saying, usually, but very smart people. Uh, okay, thank you, no questions?
No.
Alright, maintenance improvements at the Sonnet Burying Grounds. So this is, uh, for twenty-five hundred dollars, this is a annual appropriation, according to state law, revenues from lot sales may only be spent for the benefit of the cemetery in which the lots were sold. Straightforward. Article eight, maintenance of veterans' graves. So this is, um, the town will, I guess I'll just read this one, it's very short. See if the town will, in accordance with Master General Law fifteen, Section nine, to raise the appropriate and or transfer funds from available funds in the sum of five hundred dollars for the maintenance of veterans' graves. Straightforward. Article nine, cable fund appropriation. So this is, um, the P E G Accessing Cable Related Fund receives funding from a cable licensing and franchise fee agreement. The article will transfer funding from the Special Revenue Fund, and make an appropriation in the general fund to pay for contracts for video services, helping the police station community room with the necessary equipment to record meetings and facilitate large-scale virtual meetings to support outreach to residents. Great? Uh, so this is Article ten, is proposed bylaw change from one point one, posting of warrants. So this is to change the language to post warrants for annual and special town meetings to the town website, town hall, police station, and each of the office, uh, post office in the town. This will reduce the physical place for posting from six to five locations, with the addition of posting the art, um, the articles on the town website. Questions on that?
No.
Great. Article eleven, Veterans Tax, uh, exemption when a home is in a trust. So this is, most property tax exemptions are lost when a home is placed into a trust of which the rece- recipient is not a trustee. Uh, the law, this, the law allows an exemption to this rule for veterans only, uh, only if the town votes to allow that exception. This exception does not apply to recipients of exemption under Clause twenty-two H. This is something we do every year, because I feel like.
I think this is, um, right now.
Really? It must have done something similar.
We did do something similar to that, so last year, we changed some of the income limits for some of the other exceptions.
That, that's what it was.
This year, we're doing this.
And this is a one-time thing going forward, okay? That, 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 it seems like it's a one-time thing, but I.
Yeah, so in the past, uh, like, we changed some of the income and or asset limits for one of the exemptions.
Yeah.
Now we're trying to solve another problem that we're running into.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
So, the next two were submitted by petition. So this is petition, uh, transfer station, um, sticker fees. So this is to provide town residents, um, two transfer station tickets at no charge, that's twelve. And then Article thirteen is similar, and it is, uh, to provide residents with two-town beach stickers at no charge. So, I'm gonna put these two on hold, so that's eleven and twelve.
Twelve thirteen?
Twelve and thirteen.
So, I'm sorry, twelve and thirteen, I was reading eleven. Yeah. I mean, uh, these are gonna be on the, on there no matter what, by petition.
Right.
Um, but we can just come back to that in a minute. Article fourteen is addition to Juneteenth Day to be paid, a paid holiday. So this is to add, Juneteenth is a recognized holiday by, in town bylaws, it's a new holiday, wasn't in there, needs to be in there now, straightforward. Continuing police cru- uh, cruiser lease program, so this, this article is necessary for the continuation of the cru- uh, cruiser lease program established two thousand four by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. Need to do that. Approve the, Article sixteen, excuse me, approve dump truck lease purchase agreement. This is our, this, this article is necessary to purchase a new dump truck to replace the two thousand six model currently being utilized. Straightforward. Article seventeen is bylaw change, it's a parking ticket penalties. So this is submitted by the Chief of Police. Uh, the town meeting is, uh, is asked to accept the statute allowing for an appointment of a parking clerk, and amend the bylaw to accurately identify the applicable section of the, uh, general law that, that the parking ticket relative to parking ticket penalties. So this is especially with the bohramp, if we have people, you know, utilizing the kiosk, we need some enforcement to ticket those who do not buy the tickets. Article eighteen, parking violations finds an enforcement. So, this is a, a two-part. So, to see if the town will amend the general bylaws, Article thirteen, use of streets, sidewalks, and public places, follows by striking Section thirteen point two, definitions. Uh, definitions, the definition of flagman, is that a misprint right there? Definitions, the definition of flagman. Defines the definition of flagman, I think it's supposed to be defines. It's what, I read all these, and I did not pick up any of these mistakes. When you read them aloud, you really.
I think it's thirteen point two title definitions.
Yeah.
And then the definition of flagman.
Okay.
And inserting the following place there. So I think it's just a way, we might need to change that type, type to, so that it looks like a title, thirteen point two definitions is the title.
Yeah.
And then the definition of flag, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So we might need some from that, from, from there.
Yeah, so it's.
Just so it reads correctly.
I hear ya, and inserting the following there, uh, in place, so see, so flagman, see traffic controller, and by inserting thirteen point two definitions, the fa- def- define, the.
See, it's, it's the title thirteen point two definitions.
Yeah, definitely the following additional definition in proper alphabetical order within Section thirty-two. So that's just changing the order that these are in, right? The traffic controller and the flag person, flagman?
Taking the flagman and, and defining it similar to traffic.
Is flagman, uh, the appropriate terminology?
I guess it is, I guess it's in the definition.
Okay. And, so that, so that's just changing the definition there, right? And then the next part is the multi-space parking meter. Uh, device installed by the town for acceptance of required parking fees for more than one space. So this is just defining, um, the multi-space parking meter, and what that's about, also in relation to the, the.
Kiosk.
Yeah, the kiosk. So really, I should have just read the explanation, bylaws needed to amend to authorize the use of parking kiosks at the bohramp, and accurately identify the applicable section of the general law relative to parking ticket penalties. Is that more complex than it needs to be? Alright, you good?
We're good, yes.
Article nineteen, retired police officers to be appointed to special police officers. And this article would request special education, would request special legislation in order to allow retired Free Town Police Officers to be appointed special police officers for the purpose of performing police duties and other police duties, or other police duties arising from such, um, police details. So, this is kind of response to the new, um, the new regulations around, you know, who can be a cop, and we can't really have part-time cops anymore, so this will allow us, and give us more flexibility. Name change from East Hill Road to Birch Hill, so.
Birch Road.
Birch, sorry, Birch Road, thank you. Newly constructed Birch Road is a continuation of South, uh, East Hill Road, which is a short road with no houses on it. Since they're, they're on the same road, having two names has proven confusing, the article seeks to eliminate this confusion. Straightforward. Article twenty-one, Board of Health to be elected independent of the Board of Selectmen. This is, we almost had this on.
Last year's.
Last year, it, it didn't, we decided to pull it off. I think this is one that we should kind of, uh.
Yeah, hold.
Hold.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So then, in, in turn, obviously, holding Article, I mean, you're gonna have to read it, but hold, I'm, put a hold on twenty-two.
Yes, yes, twenty-two is Board of Health to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen. So this is to authorize, so I guess, maybe I should back up. Twenty-one is having an elected Board of Health. Twenty-two is to have an appointed Board of Health, separate from the Board of Selectmen, which currently holds that chair position. Alright, twenty-three. Article twenty-three, amend the Town of Free Town zoning map. This article would primarily rezone parcel of land by the Conservation Commission and the Department of Conversation, uh, Conservation and Recreation, Free Town State Forest, and municipal water departments from their current zoning to open space and recreation. Uh, in addition to other minor embedments, alter reflect the current status of the properties. Any questions on this?
No.
Okay. Twenty-four, uh, funding for the Capital Stabilization Fund, to see if the town will vote to raise the purpose, I'm a blank, for the purpose of supplementing the Capital Stabilization Fund, and or take any action brought in there too. So do we know, do we know how much that is, right? Is that gonna be?
Um, well, we have an estimate, but it will ultimately depend on whether everything gets voted to the operating budget.
That's right. I guess just for, you know, what's our estimate right now?
Two hundred thousand.
Okay. Thank you. And then, the, funding for the stabilization fund, Article twenty-five, do we have an estimate there?
Uh, three hundred thousand.
Alright, great. And that's the stabilization fund, is the rainy day fund. Twenty-seven is amend the per, uh, Personnel Bylaw three point one. It's for the town administrator, and this is to change some language, um, what is required, uh, qualifications and experience for the town administrator. They seem to be very, uh, narrow, and kind of limit, you know, some great candidates, potentially. So, I guess I could just kind of read through that real quickly. So, town administrator shall be appointed on the basis of their educational, executive, and administrative qualifications and experience. Their education may consist of a master's degree in public administration, or a master's degree in business administration, or a master's degree related to, uh, either field of study, granted by an accredited degree granting college/university, or the equivalent, as determined by the Board of Selectmen. Their professional experience may include three to five, um, three to five years' previous municipal experience. And provided however, that the qualification shall be determined by the Board of Selectmen as the appointing authority in the best interest of the town. So, that's the new language, the previous language called, called for, you know, three, oh, is it three to five years as a town administrator? Or a town manager, or a, um, assistant to a town administrator? It just, it was, which, it's very difficult to find somebody that actually has that, you know, without, it just, it just was unreasonable. So, any questions on that?
No.
Alright. And that is all. Okay, so, I guess the. I guess the first part, so. I'll entertain a motion to um approve all the articles. Except for twelve thirteen twenty-one and twenty two twenty-two?
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, okay, so now let's talk about those and we can approve those separately or vote on those, right? Alright, so. Now, and and we don't have to vote on twelve because it's, twelve and thirteen are petitions, right, so it doesn't matter.
They have to go through the town meeting.
Yeah. Maybe that's maybe that's what I'll do too, so I'll entertain a motion also to recommend all articles except for twelve thirteen twenty-one twenty-two.
Motion made.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, alright, so we got both those parts done. So twelve and thirteen, so I see these, I I think I I understand um. I think, you know, what the what this is trying to accomplish um. At the same time, personally, I just think that. Those who utilize the facilities more in town, being the town, the transportation of the town beach. I think it's fair for them to take on a little more of the burden, it's also it's a like a thirty dollar, you know, sticker charge. It's not, uh, I think extremely expensive, um, you know, so that that's just where I stand, I think that the current system we have. Is fair.
The, Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, the money that we get from, say, the transfer station, does that go back into the general fund? Is that where it ends up going?
Transfer station?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so I guess, you know, my only thought is, is alright, if I'm collecting twenty thousand dollars, say, this year from that. And Vicky needs something new, it's a lot easier for her to justify. Getting something new because she, you know, she can say, well, you know, we got this money and to help offset the cost of whatever that piece of equipment is or.
Yeah, I mean, I it it's always gonna be a cost center, I don't think we're ever gonna make money in.
Yeah, no.
We don't plan to ever make money in the trash, I just think that it's it's just, you know, seems to be a. Small amount of money for at the individual, but kind of adds up to a decent chunk to help out, cover the cost for operating that facility.
We quickly looked over the numbers today, the the budget for the transfer station is about two hundred ninety thousand dollars. We bring in a fees. About ninety thousand dollars and approximately twenty two thousand of that is for stickers.
Yeah, so we're taking.
We're already spending two hundred thousand dollars of taxpayers' dollars for the transfer station uh operations.
So, I and I don't know how we could do it, but I, I mean, one of my thoughts that came to my head is, do we do it for, say, senior citizens? Can get it for free, right, that we have people who are, you know, it 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 affects a lot more. Uh, for the senior citizens and then, you know, the other thing would be is. Why have two stickers per household? Would, I I don't understand the benefit of saying two stickers per household unless it's something that someone can tell me I'm not thinking of.
It's probably because of like each car, two people, two cars, it's probably simple as that.
Negotiation.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. So. I guess I guess I'll entertain a motion to. To not approve, is that a?
We did not recommend, but they ha- they have to go through the town meeting.
Yeah, they go on town meeting anyway, but I guess I'll entertain a motion to not recommend articles twelve and thirteen.
Um, I'll make that motion.
My second motion.
Alright, you can second, you don't have to, you don't have to vote for it if you don't want to.
No, no, I'm just thinking like, do we, the very minimum, do we put the price there so that people can see what what's made from it and everything else?
Because it's petition, I don't think we can change that technology on it, so, so it's just, yeah.
You can provide that as a present, you can provide a handout on the table, a presentation, but you can't amend the article in any way because it's petition.
Yeah, that makes sense, alright, but so, that's a motion as a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, okay, so now twenty-one. And twenty-two. This is an interesting one that I've personally flip-flop on frequently, so it's not straightforward at all. I, in a perfect world, we'd have a board of health and I think that was made up of health professionals or, you know, someone in the. Uh, e- engineering background, so title five things or um somebody that understands like food safety inspections and, you know. That's, and I would hope people that have those backgrounds would run for this position. Um, and get elected, I think the other side of that is, you know, by nature of elections, anybody can run and. Might get someone who has absolutely no idea and now, so. That's not different from the position right now, because I'm personally not experienced in any in any of the uh areas covered by the board of health, so. You know, Jared, I mean.
Yeah.
I, so I I just kind of, I struggle with this one. The other side of it, right, so that that'd be article twenty-one, article twenty-two is is appointing board of health. That's, I think that makes more sense, the the problem we could have there is if we don't have anyone who wants to be appointed, right?
Yeah, and then we have how many positions that are currently open?
Yeah.
In town hall or in town through different boards that can't.
Yeah.
Can't fill them, right, you know, we joke, but Kevin, how many boards that guy has been on because he he because they need someone and Kevin's, okay, I'll sign up.
Yeah.
Another point of this as well is, right now, we're really learning so many things that are happening in town as a as a board. And to start fresh with new members, almost seems like it'll kind of fall backwards a little bit, especially when we talk about. Some businesses in town that were, you know, finally. Like, not getting the answers to, but looking to get those answers, I mean, right now, we have a good understanding of what's going on, so.
Yeah.
To get more people involved, sounds great, but then you really have to start from scratch because you have to bring them up daily and you're marking, you know?
Yeah.
I guess that's, I have a question from Michael, you might, you'll probably know this, so other towns comparable to us, do uh they usually? Have a separate board of health, is it elected, is it appointed or?
Um, the only example that I can think of off the top of my head, Lakeville was similar to how you're set up now about twenty. Late nineties, I want to say, became separately elected board.
Okay.
Uh, there was a petition here in the late nineties to do that around the same time. I believe it did not pass, um. I will tell you, it was kind of unusual when it came off the warrant in the fall. Things get tabled, things get withdrawn all the time in. I've been moderator seven years, that was the first time I had multiple people come back and ask me how do I petition to get that back on the warrant.
Interesting.
So I think you have residents that are interested in at least discussing this stuff, well.
Yeah.
You had somebody get up at the town meeting in the fall and ask why it was withdrawn.
Yeah.
I think you have some other people that want to discuss it, you might consider leaving it on. But strongly recommending one way or another and giving.
I wish I had a strong feel like.
You have four weeks left to go.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, you're not gonna get, I, in my eyes, I'm not gonna get one, you know, I. I I I, yeah, I'm torn, there's there's so many different ways to look at it, there's no, there's, to Trevor's point, there's perfect world, you would have. These say three or five people and that they they would take the job and, you know. I've talked to people in the industry, you know, in in the engineering world and asked them, how do they feel about it? Because I I truly don't know and I want to keep, you know, you you learn a lot from talking to people, right, so um.
So.
You you would have some time now to kind of take the pulse of other towns that fall into our.
Yeah.
Area, and again, like what happened in the fall, if you find there's a clear trend in one direction or another, you could withdraw it, also. If you choose now not to put it on the warrant, then you lose that ability to get that research and feedback.
I think it's, I think I do want to be to be on the war, I think I ju- I just, I think it's, I think you have a good point, like where I I'd like to see where the people. Stand on it, I mean, I'm I I think is I think I'm, I'd rather personally not take a position on it. I mean, and not recommend it or not or uh, you know, I don't know. Just said, I I feel like it's dishonest for me to have a strong opinion on it when I just really don't know.
Yeah, especially seeing here, right, and now that you say it, it's actually a great point, I'm in charge of the board of health and then I'm gonna make a decision, I don't know. I don't know whether I would, I should or not.
I mean, you guys are kind of thrown into too, I think I said, this had started over twenty years ago here, but the current iteration of this conversation began. I know certainly before Carlos and Jared were on the board, it may even have started before you were there, because, yeah, he's he's hands up with it. Um, because I can recall when Derek was still here as the head, that this conversation had come up.
Yeah. Yeah.
The outset of COVID, that that predates any of you, so this is a conversation you guys, all three of you have been thrown into, that began before you were here.
Alright, so I guess with that, so I'll entertain a motion to, you know, approve them. To be on twenty-one and twenty-two, to be on the uh um, on the meeting. Pro- prove the warrants, well, struggling to. Um, so I guess that, I'll like, I'll entertain that motion.
Motion made.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so now if I just don't take a a vote on recommending or not recommending?
You could just take a vote for your position.
Yeah, so I'll entertain a motion to have, take no position on the on articles twenty-one twenty-two.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Uh, I think I did twelve and thirteen together, didn't I?
Uh, that's true, when you're discussing recommendations, you need to address.
Okay. It's the same, I think it's the same, for me, it's the same concept, I mean, I just kind of skipped through it in my head, no, no, thank you, I appreciate the catch. So, um, I'll entertain a motion to not recommend article thirteen.
Motion made.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. Alright, so that takes care of the annual. Right?
I, yeah, I mean, do you guys just want to take a vote to adopt the omnibus? I can't even say that omnibus budget as presented by the department.
Yeah, that works, right?
Just so it's clean?
Yep. And we we already reviewed it, but.
Right.
Uh, so yeah, so I'll I'll entertain a motion to um accept the omnibus budget as presented.
Motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Moving on.
The special. Think we'll do the same kind of approach, if there's anything that's old, we'll, I'll write them down and then we'll come back to them. And I'll just read the article title and the explanation, so management information systems upgrade. I guess I'll read the dollar value of these two, so this is fifty-five thousand dollars. The funding of this article will allow for a new email server from the town hall and online permitting for building departments and town clerk. Next is funding of the taser for police station for ninety thousand dollars. To replace existing tasers that are malfunction malfunctioning and out of warranty. Um, and out of warranty date for the police, does that make sense, out of warranty?
Warranty date for.
Out of warranty date, is that, I think that makes sense.
Expiration date.
Warranty date.
Warranty is expiration.
Out of warranty, yes.
Safety issue.
Yeah. Okay, so then we have capital projects to fund from free cash, I'll just name them, so it's a town hall security upgrades, twenty-five thousand dollars. Town hall window replacements, thirty thousand dollars, uh election tabulators, twenty one thou- thousand eight hundred dollars. And an F three fifty pickup with plow for the highway for thirty-nine thousand dollars. Seems straightforward. Article four. Reallocate funds appropriate uh appropriate for the police station. So this is um to re- reallocate four hundred thousand dollars from the police station building to be utilized for improvements. For public safety departments, communications, public safety departments, communications, which include the purchase and installation of equipment. For three radio towers as well as the purchase of new radios, so this is money left over for this building.
Right.
It would be transferred over to really for the communication tower, because we still have parts in our town that. You can't talk on the radios, which is a problem.
Jared, my question for this one is, well, let me get ahead, article five, once again, talks about the communication system and this is the leftover money. Instead of, you know, having two separate articles on the same thing, I know we're gonna kind of vote on, see if we get the money, right? Article five really touches on all of it, you need X amount of dollars, which is eight hundred thousand dollars, do we just put article four? To bed and say, hey, put this one back into the general fund or, because because Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, this money isn't tied to anything anymore, right? This isn't, wasn't a.
It's still tied to the police station, so if um the selectmen originally asked for the money, so if at the close of the fiscal year. You state that the project is complete, the money will close out and go to the general fund.
And then when that happens, then article five kicks in, right, well, not that kicks in, but eight hundred thousand dollars will also be coming out of the general fund.
It's recommended to come out of free cash, yep.
Okay, so it would, I, to me, it seems like we have two articles talk about the same, same money.
Addition to, I think it's to take the money that's here and you use it, so that way.
Yeah, and then.
Taking apples and using it for apples, right, like I, I'm.
So there's no.
No, but I think that the the overall cost was over, it's the eight hundred plus the four hundred, right?
Yeah.
I think eight hundred altogether.
So the overall cost is the eight hundred?
Oh, oh, we'll decrease by, I'm sorry.
So I am, you know, the first article will be repurposing the money, if 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 you think that's not gonna pass on town meeting four, which. It may not, the second article will then be another bite at that apple to get the eight hundred thousand dollars we need to fix the communications problem. Um, you can take off article four and just go with article five, I mean, you. You, you know what I mean, if you think that that's the best approach, it, this, like, um, Kim was saying, the the four hundred thousand, once you declare the. Police station done, we'll go back into the general fund, um, so it it it's. It is however the selectmen want to proceed with that, you, I mean, there may be, um. There may be some people on the floor that, you know, don't want to see this money being reallocated.
But they still want to. They, we need a, we need the tower, right, so I can see if somebody, if there are people on the floor who think that that four hundred thousand should be used for something else. And they also want, so they might vote that one down, but then vote for article five's yes to for the full eight hundred thousand to come out of free cash to. Fund the.
Yeah. Right, because a basics is basics, right, you need communications to be able to talk around town, so that's what we're, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Is making sure that people, all the fire and response teams can talk to each other no matter where they are in town, right? So we're really talking the same thing, it's.
Seems crazy, that's not a thing, but.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I guess they could take article four and amend it on the floor for other purpose, right, and then you would be, that would get spent and then the eight hundred thousand would.
Yeah.
Get, you know, approved. I think that's just the.
I think it's clear too how like the explanation of the article says, like, if the prior article shall pass, then this article will decrease by four hundred thousand, so it's like right there.
Okay.
You know?
Yeah, I'm just trying to make it simple for everybody that's going to these meetings, but if it makes sense to you guys, I'm I'm the new guy.
Yeah, I guess I just like it because it's reallocating funds for something, so it's like, yeah, it's not directly tied to this building. But it's still something that's related to first responders, right, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm okay with it.
As long as that's clear, we'll present that, yeah.
That's good to go.
Yeah.
Alright, 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 great, I digress, so this is the. Article six is tower lease for the public safety communications. So, um, so this is for forty-eight thousand dollars. To see if the town will approve lease agreements to uh improve the communications for the public safety department.
So these are the towers that we're talking about putting equipment on, we have to lease, we have to lease them, so I I probably should.
Space on existing towers.
There is one in Berkeley and one in East Street.
Yep.
You can get the lease from.
Yep.
That are privately owned.
Yep.
Obviously.
That makes sense. Article seven is the possible purchase of two of two main, South Main Street, this is the piece of property that is ready at the Sonor Four Corners. And um, we would, if approved, it would be um, the purchase price would be voting as a hundred fifty-one thousand dollars. So like article is explanation of of article, to see if the town will approve the purchase of the property located to South Main Street, Sonoma's property. A bus for South Main Street, which is the town currently owns, that's the red building, um, we're looking at that property to the left. Purchasing the additional property will allow for additional parking for the town hall and library employees. In the future, it may provide an area where septic system can be installed for the adjacent property on fourth South Main Street. Currently, fourth South Main Street does not have any land available for septic system, so for me, this one seems like a no-brainer, we have a. Own a piece of property or own a house. Uh, for South Main Street that we cannot do anything with because it doesn't have any room for a septic and it's just sitting there, it's falling apart. We, there's a empty lot next door. That we can get for, I think, market value. Um, but it also, it increases the value of the property we already own because we can put a septic on it. In addition, we have more employees than parking spaces right now at the town hall, so we have to utilize that same lot to also. Be a parking lot, and it, I mean, currently right now, it's kind of an eyesore, I think it'd be nice right in the middle of our town if we. Could have something a little better looking. Alright, article eight, so this is fund the ins- installation of parking lot on two South Main Streets, so if article seven passes. Then article eight would be. Then article eight would be the, sorry, should I give you the dollar value, twenty thousand dollars to put into creating a parking lot there. Any questions?
No. Pretty good price.
I think a lot of it's gonna be done by Chuck, I think Chuck said he would come in, right, with that, because with the the amount of money, we said it was gonna cost a lot of.
Yeah, we have to cut down some trees there, right? They're up against the red building, that that might call it be a little costly, and then we have to fill in that hole there's there, and then. I'm not sure if it will asphalt, but whatever we have to put down to have make it happen. So he will do some of the work, but there will be costs associated with it.
That makes sense.
Absolutely.
Okay, transfer from the health ins- article nine, sorry, transfer from the health insurance budget line to OPEB fund, so this is a transfer of two hundred and twenty nine thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. To see if the town will transfer from free cash, the amount equal to the unused funds at the end of fiscal twenty twenty one in health insurance budget to fund um OPEB. The OPEB fund will be paying for the retirement benefit of usable employees in the future, it is currently underfunded. And the addition of these un- uh unused funds will help get the town closer to being adequately funded. And this goes back to the other report we talked about earlier, we're having the actual review to see how. Dire our situation really is. Okay.
Yeah, this is just a way to get a little bit more money into that fund.
Yeah. Alright. Article ten, uh evaluation of town campus on Chase slash Memorial Road. So this is uh to hire a firm to make a site plan for the fifty two acres of town-owned land located on Chase Road slash Memorial Road. In East Free Town for the purpose of determining placement of future town buildings, this would include um. De- uh de- uh.
Delin- delineating.
Deli- delineating, delineating, I haven't read that one in a while, delineating the wetlands, uh locating existing structures, uh uh that's another tough one. Topography, cheese, of the land and determining possible locations for future buildings for town use, so this is just a study to figure out what to do with this area, um. Have a, you know, unbiased third party come in and see what what the best option is. So. Alright, next is article eleven feasibility study for town buildings. This one is for, actually, actually, I'm not sure if I mentioned article ten, but for seventy five thousand dollars.
Yes.
That's that much of that study, estimable cost. So article eleven feasibility for town buildings, this one fifty thousand dollars. And this is to hire a firm to find updated feasibility study on the town-owned buildings to determine the most economical way to meet the town and free towns' future needs. I think this is a very important thing that we need to do. It's obviously related to the previous article, um but, you know, figure out what we have and, you know, what we can do with what our current situation.
Maximize what we have.
Yeah. Okay, article twelve is uh repair or restoration of monuments in various cemeteries, and this is uh for seventy five hundred dollars, and. The cemetery commission has repaired and restored monuments in the Sonnet Burying Ground uh for several years, using perpetual care funds. And would like now to begin repair and restoring monuments in some of the older cemeteries that do not have a perpetual care. We were allocated twenty five hundred dollars for the previous um for this purpose previously, which went very quickly in twenty twenty two, and are therefore requesting additional funds. To be uh able to accomplish more, yeah, so the perpetual, the perpetual care funds, you can only use the profit, right? Uh related from from the the donations or trust or however they're requested to town, and. Especially when, depending on what what those are invested in, the interest rates are pretty low, doesn't give you a lot of uh money to make up those. That makes sense to me. It's actually, I mean, I.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Mike, will any of these go to the uh cemetery in East Free Town that's been.
I was just about to ask the same thing.
Um. It could, that one has an organization that oversees it, so we've been focusing on the ones that don't.
Okay.
Uh, we have collected small amounts of donations, people have sent us to help that cemetery. And we've let them know that that money is there and available if they'd like to tap into it. So far, the donations that we've gotten have been significantly lower than what they've spent on on repairs. So that possibility is there, if they had an amount that they wanted to ask us for, we could, you know, we could work something possibly there. But um we are, even though it's not our cemetery per se, it's not a town at home cemetery, it's not one that we take care of.
Oh.
Um, we are as angry as they are about what keeps happening.
Yeah.
Um.
It's ridiculous.
You know, it's somebody that needs to find something better to do with their time.
Yeah.
I didn't realize that wasn't town.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. Um, so this would be, that was article twelve, article thirteen, adding funds to the conservation land fund, so um. This is for fifteen thousand six hundred and thirty five dollars and fifty seven cents to be added to the conservation land fund. Established under Bachelor Law Chapter forty, section eight C, so. Rollback taxes generally represent open land being slated for development, and a well-funded land fund will allow the future purchase of open land to protect it from development. These funds represent the amount collected for rollback taxes in fiscal years twenty and twenty twenty one. Any questions?
No, that's still, that's for, I'm assuming that's forestry land and stuff like that, coming out of forestry land, going into.
Yeah.
And then coming, and then that's the amount of money that we collect on back taxes, yeah, so I mean, I think it makes sense if it's coming out of forestry or, well, I don't know, conservation, but. Um, you know.
Yeah.
We continue to find money to fund it, so I like it.
That makes sense to me. It's kind of, it's all in the same kind of sphere, like. Alright. Article fourteen, repur- repurpose monies for infrastructure needs, Free Town Elementary School. So this is um total fifty three thousand nine hundred sixty nine dollars and eighty one cents. And. So, the explanation of the article, this article would represent remaining fu- um repurposing remaining funds. Uh designated article fourteen at the June twentieth, twenty twenty annual town meeting for the fifty three thousand and change. Uh to fund technology expenditures specifically to benefit Free Town Elementary School, expenditures consist of the following. So it's it's carts for Chromebooks, storage in in classrooms, currently Free Town Elementary. School has a mix of open and closed Chromebook storages, charging stations for the classrooms, this purchase will be uniform, um will be for uniform charging stations. For all the classrooms of the Free Town Elementary School, makes sense, new server to run the network at the Free Town Elementary School. Right now, Free Television has an older model server to perform the Windows functions for the school, like um active directory. A new server will increase performance and reliability and match the capabilities at Free Television School. And we have desktop computers for teaching staff in the front office, desktop computers will be updated for staff specifically working at Free Town Elementary School. And document cameras and speakers, document camera.
Well, they're probably sticking up the cameras around the whole facility, document uh children, students, visitors, everything else. I think that's what they're talking about.
Yeah, maybe you could, yeah, maybe.
Security cameras, probably.
That's what I think, security cameras.
Alright, but I'm not sure about that one. Okay, any questions?
No.
No.
Straightforward.
Alright, article fifteen, Chippewa pump station backup generator, so this article is for the purpose of purchasing and installing a backup generator system for the Chippewa pump station. So in the event of a power outage, the pressure is maintained to adequately serve our customers. In addition, the computerized patrol system is over twenty years old and parts are no longer available for the system. Before a major failure takes place, we should upgrade the control system, and this is for fifty thousand dollar, fifty thousand five hundred dollars.
This is for the New Bedford Water System, the New Bedford Water Company, I believe.
It must be, it's Chippewa.
Yep. Okay, article sixteen. Replacement of three fire hydrants. Uh, this article is for the purpose of obtaining funds to replace three fire hydrants that were destroyed by hit-and-run motorists. And no, uh and one that is not operational, these hydrants serve as a vital water source for the town of Free Town depart- uh Fire Department and allow access to. Water, sorry, water to help aid fire, fighting fires in and around the areas of east Chippewa Road, south main street, and innovation way. So if someone hits, just question this, if someone hits one of our fire hydrants as a hit-and-run. There's no insurance the town has to cover that that cost?
I don't know. If they can find the person, I believe they go through their insurance to recoup the funds.
Yeah, but if it's hit-and-run.
Private insurance for us through the town.
Cause I did one where we knew who it was, and we recouped the funds for that.
Like, I'm just thinking, like.
You talking about liability insurance for the town itself?
Like, I have a hit-and-run, I got hit-and-run one time, I had to pay a thousand dollar duck bill, but then I dropped my car fax. We should have the same thing for fire hydrants.
I think that was on the list of the things that they don't.
It's, I'm sure it's so common that they just won't cover it.
It's like street science, different things, if we don't know who did it, they don't cover them.
Okay, just curious about that.
And you know, these two are from the water department, which has their enterprise fund, so this is always a, you know, some kind of at town meeting.
That's what was gonna be my question, is because they're an enterprise fund and they fund themselves, we're spending, we're we're going to the town asking for money. But then the enterprise fund is supposed to fund itself, I thought, so. I I don't, I don't have a problem doing it, because if we need the stuff, we need it, especially when you're talking about fire hydrants and stuff, right, but.
Yeah.
So just to clarify, an enterprise fund does not have to be one hundred percent self-funding.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so the town can at any point give a subsidy to the the enterprise fund, so it would be the town folks' decision if they wanted to use town funding. Um, to support, and again, this is um to support more of a capital type of expenditure rather than operations.
Yeah, yeah, I'm okay with it.
And both these things, like one, like, you know, if fire hydrants are needed, obviously fight fire, I I don't wanna be, you know, not funding that. Fire, right? And also, I mean, I think that we definitely need to invest money into our water system, because the last thing we need is is for something, some kind of failure, and. So, these are two things that I think are definitely the benefit.
Well, I agree, I was just curious, because it's an enterprise fund, but I agree.
That's a, that's a good question. Okay. Alright, hmm. Next is article seventeen. Uh, addition to the employment positions to bylaw, to the bylaws, so this is adding some additional job titles. Um, they are confidential secretary for the police department, town planner, conservation conservation agent, facilities manager, town planner slash conservation agent, and. Uh, human resource director, so this is to add to the list of positions that are currently in town, so. The confidential secretary is an existing position that needs to be included under the personnel ca- uh and classifications by law for proper administrated administration. Of compensation and benefits. Town planner, conservation agent, facilities manager, and town planner slash conservation agent, and human resource directors. Director would be new positions, this would allow the town to hire these personnel for these positions when and if it's needed, so we're not gonna hire them right now, there's no open positions for them. But, you know, town is growing, right, and we're gonna, looks like we need to fill those positions sometime in the future. So I think this kind of gets us ahead of that curve. Um, makes a lot of sense to me. And article eighteen, supplement to the capital stabilization fund. This appropriation would add funds to the capital stabilization fund to be used for purchase of capital assets or payments. Of related debt, services on capital assets, any proposals to the fund require two-third vote at town meeting.
No comments allowed.
Yes.
Um, and I had talked briefly with Dev about this, um, we have a meeting on the twenty fifth of May with the board assessors to. Um, request that there be a release of overlay surplus. Um, so if we were to amend the wording on this article, it would allow for any overlay surplus that got voted to be added to the capital stabilization. Um, so I I would um recommend where you have transfer from free cash, the sum of blank. Um, and add wording to say and or overlay surplus, the sum of. And we'll fill in the blank based on whatever they are willing to release.
Yeah.
So you actually have two funding sources.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay, that works for me, so I guess we'll vote on that change. Maybe I'll just, uh maybe I'll just do that, we'll vote on that one particularly right now, specifically, so, I entertain a motion to modify the uh language on article eighteen to also include overlay surplus.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And I think that is all. And I don't think we have anything on hold. Kind of talked through everything, so. With that. I'll entertain a motion to uh approve all the articles on the uh for the special town meeting.
Motion made.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, I'll entertain a motion to uh uh to recommend all the articles on the special town meeting.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Got those done? Alright, so now I'll, so should we, we should close it, right?
You should close, I guess.
So I'll entertain a motion to uh close the annual and special town meeting warrant.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Moving on, so this is a discussion of vote to whether to accept gift uh donated. Of a flowering tree and its placement from the Boy Scout troop one six four of a sonnet, which I was a member of. Boy Scout troop one six four.
Do you have to reuse yourself?
Uh, so yeah, this is awesome, they wanna donate a flowering tree and either put it at the halfway park or the bandstand. Uh, which is great to, do we have to, we don't have to make a decision of where we want it to go, right? You know?
The board would have to decide the placement.
Okay.
So you could, you could.
I can see this being one of those things that sounds great, I think someone's really upset.
I'm gonna say either, like they said, halfway park at the welcome sign there. Or at the bandstand, so you could just pick one of those two locations and then maybe they. You know.
Yeah.
Have to clarify the town administrator or.
I like halfway park just because there's more space.
Well, al- but also, like, people, people play sports there, and so I don't wanna make, I wanna make sure it's not in an area that's gonna mess up a soccer club.
Tree or not gonna have those.
Well, this ain't next to the welcome sign, right, so it's not gonna be.
Yeah.
I don't know, and then you, but then you could say the same thing, you have the the strawberry festival, right, where they're gonna be, we put it somewhere and we can mess with someone's booth. Where they play, I don't know, it sounds awful, but it's just, I don't know, I'm thinking.
Halfway park, I think I agree with, there's more space halfway park, it's probably.
And it's actually probably visited more, right, so it's, if they're gonna be nice enough to donate to us, let's put it in a more invisible spot.
Okay. Alright. That works for me, near the welcome sign.
Yeah.
So welcome sign as you pull into water street?
Into halfway park. So when you're coming down water street and you take the lot into halfway park, there's a welcome sign, it's saying next to that.
Alright, so.
Just, just worry if, you know, one gets flooded out, tree dies, or two, we we change the way halfway park is set up.
Well, we give up the tree.
That's what I'm trying to avoid, you know.
Yeah, but you could say that the flooding could happen.
Sure.
On the other, they they're both right on the river, so, I don't know.
Alright, so, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the donated flowering tree and locate it next to the welcome sign at halfway park.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ambulance payments, so ambulance payments and write-offs for March twenty twenty two are eighty thousand, eight thousand six hundred eighty four dollars and fifteen cents, I'll entertain a motion to approve the payments and write-offs.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, next is the company to utilize for the assessor tax book scanning project. So, do we get all three quotes in?
We get two quotes, right? We asked if we could get two.
Oh, I thought, for some reason, I thought we were waiting out there.
We did send it up.
They didn't get back to us.
Alright.
Okay. So there's King's Information Systems, that quote was for twelve thousand dollars, and Morgan's Record of Management, which is fifteen thousand seven hundred seventy one dollars and twenty five cents. Any notes, anything to note on this, rather than just going with the better price? Alright. Well, it seems.
Cheaper, right? Thirty seven hundred dollars.
Yeah, sometimes, you know, it's not, just always priced up.
Right, right, yeah, no, absolutely.
Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to um to use, to utilize King's Information Systems. For the assessor's tax book scanning project.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just so you know, that's coming out of a grant.
Okay.
It's coming out of a grant, but we still wanna use.
Yeah, no, I wanna.
Best practices and do the lows.
Absolutely.
And we've used cans before, so.
I think we are all done. Uh, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.